Good evening, everybody. Welcome to the Tuesday, January 23rd Board of Selectmen's meeting. I'll read the agenda. Seven o'clock we'll have citizens input. Seven oh five we'll introduce Nick Riccio. Seven ten Mark Forensic, John Gibson. Seven fifteen, public hearing. Better Food Foxborough LLC, DBA Tavelinos and Lakeview Pavilion. Seven forty CRGE Foxborough LLC, DBA Toby Keith's I Love This Bar and Grill, change of manager. Seven fifty, selectmen's update. Eight o'clock town manager's update. Eight ten, assistant town manager's update. And then we have a bunch of action items. Mary Beth, because you were late, you can lead us in the pledge of allegiance.
(laughing). Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. A little bit after seven, is anybody here for citizens input? Anybody? Anybody?
Walsh, eight point dev. So, um, had a pretty big game here on Sunday. And I don't even think that the trophy was given out before the phone and the messages started to the Walsh house. Um, what are we gonna do? You know, bigger and better, blah, blah, blah. So, um, in the process of putting all the facts and figures and everything together, but like to do it like we did last year, have the rally on the common on Saturday. Everybody's on board with this. I spoke with Deb G. from REC. She would like to have folks go down to the, um, to the booth and maybe get a drone shot of everyone. And also, um, she's gonna open it up so kids can make posters and things like that. And then they'll all come up to the common. Senator Feeney has offered to DJ again. You know, we just wanna stay right the way that we did it before, superstitious wise, right? So, uh, he'll be DJing and, um, the J.C.'s will be giving out some little handout things. Also, a large door prize of a signed autograph Gronk shirt. So, um, that's all free. It's not, you don't have to pay for the raffle. It's, it's, um, we're gonna do that. We also, in the meantime, hopefully, selectmen, the Bellas and myself on Sunday, want to reach out to everybody in town to decorate their homes. Um, we'll come by with video cameras and maybe do some interviews of some certain people and, and places around town that we can put a collective clip together to send down to the, uh, to the boys again. The rally will be taped by Foxborough Cable again. And Saturday night we'll get that down there so they can sleep well knowing that their hometown is rallying behind them. Um, I spoke with Jim off and on, so, um, do you wanna do some further updates?
No, you've pretty much covered it. Kind of stepping back a little bit, it's, at this table, it's always a little awkward when you're dealing with the crafts because, for lack of a better term, you're damned if you do, you're damned if you don't. They're in front of us for permits, so if we do too much, you're on that side doing favors, getting favors. If you don't do enough, you let an opportunity go by. So, with the way we approach it, we called out to Jesse Inos over at the Patriots and said, "Look, it's a good opportunity to take the root one entity, bring it to town center, and let's all work together." So, with that in mind, we said, "How can we do it and involve the community but not, you know, save the duck boats for Boston, the big thing, but just a hometown feel?" So, um, they were very excited about it. So, what they're gonna do is provide a lot of those big eight-foot banners, they're gonna print them up all around the common, similar to what we did last year. And then they're also gonna give us 50 of them. Um, and then Linda's gonna come up with 50. So, it's kind of a shared thing. So, we've got 100 blank white banners. So, we're gonna have them available. If people wanna come during the week, once we get them, we're gonna put grommets on them, take them home, decorate them, bring them back, and we'll put them up on the common. And then we're gonna have a contest for the nicest banner, and that's where the Gronk shirt is gonna come in. So, we'll have judges on that. So, it's, it's really a good opportunity to keep it in town, you know, the music, go to the common, celebrate a little bit, have the banners up, do the video. So, the, the video is probably gonna happen this weekend.
The video of around town, yeah.
Yeah. And then the following Saturday.
Is the, is the actual rally?
The actual rally, noon time in the common, similar to what it was last year. And then, so...
Eleven on the common, Jim.
I'm sorry, eleven. Eleven to twelve, or eleven to twelve something.
Yes, it's gotta be, yeah.
Exactly the same.
Yeah. So, everything's, you know, it's worked. And it's a nice, it's almost a 50/50 type effort, the volunteers and the, you know, the capital expense for the banners. It works out nice. And then, so talking to them, a couple other things that, I asked them if they didn't mind if I shared, you know, the craft organization. So, they had, uh, this is kind of broader for Foxborough. If you are a season ticket holder in Foxborough, they hosted a dinner a couple weeks ago on a Thursday night and invited all the Foxborough ticket holders into the stadium. And it was a presentation and a question and answer. And basically, how can we make it better for the Foxborough season ticket holders? And one of the questions was, you know, seriously, do you really have a, um, a raffle, a, not a raffle, a lottery for the tickets? We've never seen them. So, uh, they, they took it seriously. And for the first time ever this year, if you are a Foxborough season ticket holder, you will be in a sole lottery by yourselves, and they'll pick two, two people, uh, one person for two tickets. You have to purchase it, but you have the ability to buy it. So, that's the first time they ever done it. It's kind of a reach out to, um, you know, to, to work better with the community. And then the other thing I think is, is kinda really neat is if you went to the ribbon cutting that we had at the Orpheum, they had a band called Thirty-Six Red, homegrown, Jim Politano, Larry Smith. They invited them, they're gonna bring them down on a coach bus down to the Super Bowl so they can, so Foxborough band can play for their team right before, uh, right before the game and all the pre-games, and then after and all the post-game. So, it, this year, it's, you know, how do you let six go by and not do something? So, I think it's just enough, not overboard and, um, but I wanted to thank Linda for kind of spearheading it. All the questions, all the signups go through her Facebook page. She'll put it out there 'cause she volunteered for that. And, you know, and also...
'Cause Jim doesn't do Facebook.
The, um, the REC department is gonna step up. So, um, if you don't wanna pick up a banner to decorate and bring back, we'll give you the details. But they'll set up tables at the booth, and then the kids and the families can go down and do that and then bring them back.
Right. And I think, yeah, I think that's what would be cool is they decorate them down there, and then they bring them up to the common, and we can get all that on video too. And Foxborough Cable, God bless them, um, they work with us really well, and they'll make sure it gets turned around and gets back down there for Saturday night for the part of the rally. But it will be ongoing for the video, um, you know, this week.
It's a exciting week in Foxborough.
It is. It's another, and the community's coming together for it. It's, it's like an, you know, old-time rally, and it'll be fun. So, hope to see everybody there.
Spread the word.
Yes.
Let people know. Just say it should be fun. And we had a good showing last year, but we wanted, obviously wanted to be bigger if we can.
It will be bigger this year, yeah.
And some things, you know, I don't know if this'll happen again this year, but they, if, you know, I'm not gonna say it, but considering the outcome of the game, uh, we may get, we may get a live telecast from the, from the common again after the game. So, that's a possibility.
Yeah, that was that good morning, America, that we had to be up there at, what, five o'clock in the morning on Mondays?
It was like seven o'clock.
And it was like three of us up there.
Yeah, I know.
We gotta get that word out quickly.
The night before, right?
Yeah.
But that's still a possibility too, so I'll look into that some more too.
Yeah. Well, we won't even cross that. We don't even...
I'm not gonna say, it only depends upon the result, right?
We don't talk about that until...
I'm not gonna, not gonna talk about that.
Are we gonna have a friendly wager?
Yeah, I know, you guys, yeah.
We gotta work on that.
Yeah. Work on that.
I don't know, I don't know if you can deal with Philadelphia politicians.
Or fans.
I don't know. We'll see.
All right. So, I just wanted everybody to know, that's, that's the scoop. And, um, uh, thank you, Paul Feeney, thank you, Foxborough Cable, thank you, uh, Deb G. And, um, the Orpheum has said that we can use their restrooms, their facilities. And, um, if it's real bad inclement weather, we can go inside. Inclement means pouring rain. Other than that, if it's snowing, we love, you know, the snowball, right?
One other thing that's come out too is that the, uh, the team is planning to leave from Foxborough on Monday.
Monday.
Monday morning. It's got, I guess there's a little bit of a rally up at the stadium itself that they do typically every time they, they take this trip.
Yeah, that's, yeah.
So, that's gonna start like, I think, around eight o'clock in the morning.
Right. And that's all of New England will be there.
That's all of New England. So, just to make people aware of that, but, um, we just got alerted about that today.
So, just so everybody understands, things like this don't just happen without volunteers and people to spearhead it. And once again, you stepped up. I don't know if you volunteered or were voluntold.
You know what was funny? You know, you know what was funny is Paul Farmer was talking to me, and he said, um, you know, "I, I don't know if I got it right, so can you get in touch with Abby from Channel Ten?" And so, I said, "Yeah, sure." So, I, I gave her a call. I said, "I just said, 'It's Linda from Foxborough.'" And she said, "Oh, so you're the community coordinator, social..."
Congratulations.
No, I said, "No, I don't, I don't..."
New title.
"I have no title." I said, "I'm a J.C.," that's what I am. And she said, "Oh, no, no, someone, one of the secretaries called you that." And I said, "Well, that's, you know, great to know, but no. I am, you know, the J.C., so..."
Anyway, thank you.
Oh, thank you.
It's much...
Thank you, guys. It's what we're made of.
And just lastly, I mean, there's, over at the stadium, they're incredibly busy, but they did take the time to sit, work this out. And they're actually excited, you know, Jess is over the top excited about this, so...
Jeremy too. I've been talking to Jeremy.
It'd be, it's a nice combined effort.
It is. It is. All right. See you there.
All right, thanks, Linda.
Seven thirteen, we got a couple minutes before our seven fifteen hearing. Our seven ten has withdrawn, I believe.
We forgot seven oh five.
Seven oh five, oh. Seven oh five. But our seven ten did withdraw, correct?
Yes, they did.
Okay.
They did.
Seven oh five, Nick.
So, actually, okay. So, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, it's our pleasure to introduce to you and to the entire community, Mr. Nick Riccio, who is our new building commissioner. Uh, Mr. Riccio has, uh, has a very decorated career in, in public service. He's, uh, served as the, is a former, is a former building commissioner in town of Mansfield for 2000, since, actually, since 2009. Um, 2000, is it 2009, Nick, or is it 2000? Is he, yeah, it's...
Actually, it's 2003, I believe.
Actually, nineteen ninety-two to 2003, you're actually a assistant for zoning enforcement office. Now, you became the, then you became the building commissioner, actually, just after that. So, um, he then left, um, Mansfield in 2015 to become the, actually, state building commissioner for about a week.
For two months, actually.
About two months? Say like a week.
Please stand.
And then became the, uh, and then the, the town of Rantham building commissioner since, uh, since 2015 too, just before he started here. So, we, um, he has a very, uh, very great background for, in fact, we're very blessed to have him, I think. And he's a great guy. People like working with him. He's got a very good, solid background in building services, as well as he's an attorney, which is even, and even a bonus, I think, in that respect. So, we appreciate that. So, um, I give to you, and I present to you this evening, the, the new building commissioner, Mr. Nick Riccio.
Thank you very much, Bill. Thank you for having me. And thank you, Bill and Mary Beth. It's a great transition for me. It's been very smooth and great to be here, so thank you for having me.
Welcome.
Thank you very much.
Any questions or...
I, I haven't had the pleasure of dealing with Nick, but I did, I did talk to some other inspectors who happen to know him, and all the reviews I got were very positive, so...
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So, we'll meet you the other day.
Very encouraging.
Thank you.
You got big shoes to fill.
I know. Very sensitive, the fact that I'm following a legend, believe it, doing it to the bill standard.
Do you smoke a pipe?
No. I do not.
You better stop. You'll have something that we'll catch him on, though, that's all.
What, he's, he does a wonderful job here. It's a terrific department, great people here, great staff. Everybody's been wonderful, so glad to be part of this team, and, um, I'll, I'll look at the bill standard for sure. Thank you very much.
I don't wanna embarrass you, but I, I've had the pleasure of working with Nick for a couple years in the work I do over in Mansfield. Back in the interim town manager age that we went through, I actually reached out to Nick. I, I knew your abilities as a building inspector, I knew your abilities as, um, a little bit as an attorney. But your reputation and the integrity, how you helped Mansfield, I actually asked if you'd consider to be our town manager prior to you.
Mm-hmm.
So, not, not a slight of you.
No, it's, it's, it's interesting story about how we met too, by the way.
Yeah. But, um, I was hoping he'd say yes, at least to, to get going, but he said no for, for very good reasons.
Absolutely.
More staying away from the politics side of it, but hands down, you know, the integrity and your reputation is, is stellar as, as far as my experiences, so I'm very happy.
I appreciate that very much, Jim. I enjoy working with you, and it's worked out very well, the way it worked out, so...
Yeah.
It worked out better, but thank you for saying that. I appreciate it. I've always enjoyed working with you in the past as well and in the future.
Nick and I have, have a mutual admiration side because we, we actually, when I was, actually chosen as town manager in, in Mansfield, Nick was the interim.
Yes.
And, um, and so, that's how I got to know him. And I said, "Jeez, this gotta be a great building commissioner if I could lure him back to, uh, at the time, denim," but I was thinking, you know, when I got here, I said, "He's gonna come to Foxborough someday, I hope." So, and then, so, so it worked out.
It worked out great. It's been a broken...
That means everything.
Yeah.
Yes, and I've heard, um, good things from the people in the trades.
Thank you.
Who have dealt with you in the past and said you're very fair, very thorough.
Appreciate that.
They enjoyed working with you, so...
Thank you very much. Appreciate that. Look forward to working with you all. If I can be of any assistance, please, feel free to call, call me anytime, really mean that, so, thank you.
Thanks, Nick.
Good luck.
Thank you very much. Enjoy your night. Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Nick.
So, again, our seven ten is withdrawn. Uh, seven sixteen, public hearing, Better Food Foxborough LLC, DBA Tavelinos and Lakeview Pavilion. Doc, can you open the...
Yep. The Board of Selectmen, acting as the local licensing authority pursuant to Mass General Law, Chapter 138, will conduct a public hearing on Tuesday, January 23rd, 2018, beginning at 7:15 PM in the Gallup Meeting Room, 40 South Street, on the acceptance of the provisions of the Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 138, Section 33B, Sales of Alcoholic Beverages by On-Premises Licenses on Sundays and Certain Legal Holidays between 10:00 AM and, and 12:00 PM for the following establishments, Lakeview Pavilion and Tavelinos. All interested parties are welcome to attend.
Hey, Tom.
Hello, Tom Peruna from Tavelino, and would like to request the extension to a 10 o'clock license on Sundays and certain legal holidays. I'd like to pursue serving brunch on Sundays and feel we could only do it in a proper way if we had the ability to serve alcoholic beverages to those who would want it. And I've been with Tavelino for nine and a half years. I think have a very good record with the Board of Selectmen, the local police department, and the alcohol we serve in a responsible fashion with people monitoring and supervising the service. So, I'd ask that you would, um, grant an extension or if you have some questions for me.
Open up to the board.
So, right now, you don't have a brunch?
We don't. We open at 12 o'clock on Sundays. So, to, um, better our business, as we look forward each year to increase sales and how to gain more revenue, this year, we would like to extend our hours, a couple hours, and bring in one more meal plan being brunch.
Is this the only Tavelino's location?
We have, uh, one other Tavelino in Westboro, and we have another sister restaurant called Sienna and Mashpee.
Okay, any of them do brunches? So, you have something there.
Well, our Westboro location has been open for eight years. They did brunch for several years, um, but they don't currently do it. I think with, um, myself and our executive chef, we would have the knowledge to, um, put the effort into making a plan for staffing, food, beverages, and everything to put that together.
Good.
Any questions? No reservations?
Do you wanna make a reservation, you said?
No reservations on, on the, on the application. Thank you. Wait. Me and this is a, a public hearing. Is, uh, anybody in the audience have any questions or concerns regarding this? Seeing none. Now, we have a public hearing with, with two entities, okay?
The other entity.
We'll do the entity, the other entity before we, um, close the public hearing.
Sure.
Make sense?
Hi.
Hello.
Hi. Patty McCarthy Service, um, manager for Lakeview Pavilion. Kim Wallace, controller. We're just looking to extend as well. Um, we typically have had, you know, our 12 o'clock license, we have had extensions before for the 11 o'clock. We typically have each year, we've had those extensions. So, we do hold some occasional showers, um, brunch weddings on Saturdays, Sundays. And they typically would start at 10 or 11. So, in the past, we've just said, "Well, you know, if you start at 10, alcohol service won't start till 11." So, sometimes they push off to 11, other ones still do a 10. They don't all have alcohol service, I mean, typically, very few of them have a full bar or cash bar, but some of them, most, for the most part, it's mimosas and Bloody Marys. It's a, it's a very limited bar usually, just kind of from a station. But we were just looking just to be able to offer that to, uh, you know, customers. And so, usually those events are 50 to 80 people, mostly women for baby showers and, um, wedding showers. So, that's really all it is, is just to be able to offer them to come in a little bit earlier and have a drink when they arrive rather than waiting until their food service starts. Well, food service would always be in conjunction with it as well. So, that's really what we were looking for.
Okay. Questions?
No.
So, um, any questions from the audience? Seeing none. Tom happens to be the president of Foxcares.
Mm-hmm.
And Lakeview has been a member since the, the get-go. I can't, I can't think of two better establishments, um, that represent responsible, um, service.
Mm-hmm.
So, um, I have, I have no reservations, so, um, I have no further comments either.
We need a motion to close the hearing first.
Move to close public hearing?
Second.
Motion made, second. Any further discussion? Seeing none. All's in favor?
Hi. Um, move to approve, uh, the extended, uh, uh, service hours from, to, to 10:00 AM for both Lakeview Pavilion and Tavelinos.
Second.
Motion made, second. Any further discussion? Seeing none. All's in favor?
Hi.
Good luck.
Good.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Appreciate the nice comments as well.
All right. See you all.
Make a reservation.
All right. We'll see.
This next one isn't a public hearing, is it?
It's not.
Not.
Folks from Toby Keith's here? Okay. Uh, we'll take the seven forty. Uh, CRG Foxborough LLC, DBA Toby Keith's I Love This Bar and Grill, change of manager.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Yeah. You feeling better, by the way?
Yes. Yes. Hello.
Hi.
First, I'd like to thank you for showing grace to me and my family when we were sick the last time we were supposed to appear.
Sounds like the whole state was sick.
Yeah. It's been a rough one. Um, first, I'd like to address the, um...
Can you state your name for the record?
My name is Toni Costa.
Okay. Thank you.
Um, on behalf of CRG Foxborough, I want to extend a formal apology for the erratic behavior displayed by Scott Bowen at the town meeting on December 28th, 2017. The type of behavior displayed by Mr. Bowen at the town meeting is in no way representative of what we stand for as a company at Toby Keith's I Love This Bar and Grill. We hold the town of Foxborough in high esteem and take our relationship with the town very seriously. Mr. Bowen was immediately terminated due to this incident. Please accept our most sincere apology for this unfortunate incident. We look forward to a long and prosperous relationship with you and the community of Foxborough moving forward.
Thank you for that. Um, Mr. Burke?
Yes.
You are the new manager.
Yeah.
The paperwork here. Can you just tell us about your experience, please?
I have a lifelong experience in the restaurant field, over 20 years, working in Seconk, Massachusetts. Started at the Old Griswell. Fifteen-plus years in province, bars, restaurants, and nightclubs, and two years now at Toby Unfortunately, this arrived in my plate unexpectedly, but I'm ready to step up and, um, show the board and the town of Foxborough that we've taken the measures to continue to do what we do best and continue to strive for greatness at Toby Keith's and town.
I hope it's, I hope it's something different than what the former manager thought was what he did best.
Absolutely not.
Okay.
Over 10 years' experience managing as well, so this is something that's not new to me. And I look forward to this opportunity as well.
I'll open up to, any questions from the board?
So, Brian, you were the assistant manager there?
Yes.
Okay, and you'd been there a couple of years?
Been two years in March.
And have you had beverage service, um, training in the past and...
As far as training at Toby Keith's or in general?
In general.
Yeah, I've had management experience in large corporations, some great companies I worked for in the past, and 10 years-plus management experience, restaurant, bar, and nightlife.
Okay.
How many hours a week are you gonna be there as a manager?
Uh, be 50 plus on most weeks. Event days, event weeks will probably be increased.
How many assistant managers does Toby Keith have?
We have two assistant managers. As of now, we'd be looking to hire a third manager.
How many hours a week are you going to be there as a manager?
Be 50-plus on most weeks. Event days, event weeks will probably be increased.
How many assistant managers does Toby Keith have?
We have two assistant managers. As of now, we'd be looking to hire a third manager.
So there'll always be either an assistant or a manager on any given night of the week?
Yes.
Ginny?
You've been the, you were the assistant manager under the previous regime?
Correct.
I'll tell you, Mr. Bowen did not make a good impression on the Boerschlockman or the town of Foxborough. There've been problems up at Toby Keith. Lots of times, they're reported on the 24J reports. I don't know if you're familiar with those. I know it's just a Massachusetts thing. It's, when you're picked up for DUI, they ask, where's the last place you've had a drink? And Toby Keith's lots of times has been mentioned, has been named. You were assistant manager for two years there. How can you convince or assuage our concerns that things will be a little better at Toby Keith's?
Yeah, so when I did start, there was a whole change of management at that point as well, and that was part of the reason why I was brought in at that time. Those reports were brought to me as well. The number of cases that was public, I believe that was our article, I believe in the Boston Globe, that came out with those reports. And we did take that very serious at that time, and we took the steps to correct those issues. And I, I don't know the numbers offhand, but I believe in the past two years, you would see a dramatic change in those results. So I would continue that and keep enforcing that with the strict alcohol service policies that we have in place today and improving those.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, just a question. Foxborough has a very active group of alcohol license holders called Fox Cares that does a lot of work in trying to prevent 24J incidences as well as provide appropriate measures of training for all of the license holders to try and set the right example so that everybody sort of looks out for each other. And that's, and that's important because ultimately, the town is the license overseer for the entire entire community. That group was started probably about three, four years ago, about three years ago, Dave. And it's been very successful. And I don't know how active your establishment has been in that, but I would strongly encourage you to become part of that group because you'll learn that being part of the group is much more, it's actually very helpful to how you're going to manage your establishment going forward. And it just, it offers you that opportunity to ask questions and to get training that you may not see in other ways. So I think it's actually a good group. And you're not required to do it, but it's something that you certainly are encouraged to do because it's actually a good, good step forward.
Thank you. We'll definitely move forward with that and reach out to them. Fox Cares, your folks?
Fox Cares, that's correct.
So fortunately, I asked Tom Petruna to stick around. He's the president of Fox Cares. And we have, they have a meeting on January 31st at 2:30. Hope to see you there.
All attentions to attend the meetings and...
And Tom can give you, could give you the details afterwards. But, you know, the fact that they share best practices, share some of the issues that each individual establishment's going, going through, it's just another resource to help if you're having some issues. And I'll tell you, just about all the members up at Patriot Place, all the establishments up there, including the stadium, participate. And I think, you know, knock on wood.
It's really helped.
It's come a long way in the last, in the last three years, I think, for responsible service. So it's, we can't force you to do it, but we strongly encourage it.
Absolutely.
Just have one more question? We've just talked about the alcohol service, you know, at Toby Keith. Are you also, as a manager, are you also responsible for making timely payments to the town of Foxborough? You know, fees and...
That would not be...
No, that was not him.
Me personally, no.
So there was a, we had a regional manager in place for approximately seven years. He was recently terminated for reasons about like the payments. And there was, recently we found out there was some theft, and we have the Foxborough Police involved with that. Moving forward, I will be doing all that. So it will be done in a timely manner. I, he didn't, there was a few things that were loopholes, like incorrect address, so we weren't receiving the bill. But moving forward, I personally will be responsible for it. So I can assure you all that everything will be made in a timely manner. So I do apologize for that.
Thank you.
One more quick question. And what is your position, Toni? I see you've signed as manager, but are you like the general manager or...?
No, I'm the manager of the entity that owns Toby Keith.
Okay.
Well, I just have one more question. I noticed on the application fee that Mr. Burke paid the fee with his personal check to the ABCC in Foxborough. Is that the usual, that the person applying pays and not the entity?
I'm not sure about that. I don't know that answer.
I mean, I'd never noticed that a personal check was used before.
We just reimbursed him.
No.
So he just did it because it was...
Yeah, I just wanted to get the paperwork.
It would have been just easier with the transition going on there. Toni's actually located in Arizona.
I'm in Arizona.
So she's, she's actually getting on top of all the issues right now and has been very good to work with. I can, I can personally attest to that, so.
Okay.
So we should be, we should be fine.
Any further questions? Kind of a motion?
Move to approve Mr. Burke as the new manager of Toby Keith, I Love This Bar and Grill.
Second.
Motion made, second. Any further discussion? Seeing none. All's in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Good luck.
Look forward to working with you.
Best of luck to you.
Tom, get him.
Had they never been?
Early on, they were.
Mr. Chairman, I know Brian's here, so just want to say thanks for all your efforts in this as well. And appreciate the, you know, you putting me in touch with Toni on this situation. And glad it all worked out the way it did. And so one second, no, I appreciate that. So, and congratulations to the entire organization on the great win this past weekend, so.
Thanks, Brian.
Bye.
Seem to be walking better.
Yeah, that's good.
I had a schedule. Good to be back. Oh, that's right. Selectments update. I had the pleasure of watching last week's, last meeting. And I just have a, a couple of comments.
You'd be an armchair quarterback.
Yeah, you know, it's, you know, regarding the, the meeting policy, I read through it. I reached out to Bill. I, I think in an effort to try and get an overreaching policy, we made it way too complicated and way too overbearing. So I think, I think we need to review that and try and simplify it. I got to believe that with the opening of this space, there's, there's got to be ample opportunity for people to get meeting space now. And it's just, it's just a coordination and scheduling thing. But I like, I like to simplify that. And then, you know, with that policy, I think somebody asked about the vehicle policy too. I, I thought that was, that was resolved, and it's still not resolved. So I think, I think we need to look at our policies and the timing that it takes before, you know, when it gets to this board and we approve it, or if we don't approve it and we need to bring it back. Just to, you know, kind of keep it, keep it on a schedule. You know, I, I think, you know, that should be a future agenda topic, like next meeting.
It really wasn't the vehicle policy per se, it was...
Yeah, it's just, it's a piece of it.
I know it's, it's a piece of it, but it's, it's part of a bigger policy that, you know, it's, it's kind of just out there. I know you guys are working hard to put these policies together and get them going, get people trained and everything else. But just like to go back and take a look at the, the policy history and the timing and everything else.
But also that the, what we were talking about, we're having another meeting on, was it the 22nd?
We're waiting for the vendor. We all agree on what we want. We're just waiting for the person to come through at the logos.
It's the logos.
I was probably coughing at that point.
So that's, that's what it was. It's about the logos, trying to...
Okay. So if we can just circle back on the, on these policies and do a complete review on them, and have a discussion, I think that would be good.
Sure.
We love policies.
That's a good thought.
That's all I had. Anybody have anything else?
No, we attended the MMA, Mass Municipal Association convention this weekend, and Bill was once again elected to the M-I-I-A Board.
Of Directors, yeah.
Of Directors. So congratulations.
Thank you.
He was worried, but I did vote for him.
Thank you, Jay. I appreciate that.
Oh, so you were the one.
Yes.
And I think we have a new Eagles coat?
Yeah, yeah. Jim and I attended Jack Bellinger's Eagles ceremony on Saturday afternoon. Very well attended. A lot of people, so it was, it was good.
Congratulations, Jack. Anything else? Bill?
Okay, so just a few things for you. The, one thing that we did, we haven't mentioned to you all, but we, we actually, through Caitlin's work and through Mike, Mike Weber's work, they've combined efforts to produce a podcast of our meetings. So you can actually down, you can download, if you go to wherever you get your podcast information on iTunes or, or if it's a, another, if it's not an Apple product, obviously, you can actually, if you go to the Town of Foxborough podcast area, you can actually download our meetings. So after we, after we produce our meetings, they get downloaded into a podcast form. You can, so if you're listening, you're in a car, you can listen to a meeting that's been, that's been done previous days. Just want to, I want to say first, I said earlier, just a minute ago, congratulations to the Patriots on another Super Bowl trip to, this one to Minnesota. So we want to wish them all well in their efforts. I think our next meeting will be right after that game, so we're going to just, we're certainly wish them the very best. And of course, participate in the, in the rally that's going to happen next Saturday and, and just send them all our best wishes and hope that they can bring back another trophy. The, just a reminder, I didn't, Nick was reminding me of this when I was, when I was thinking of him at the time, was that Bill Caspar's retirement party is this weekend, this Friday night. Just to make sure everybody's aware of that. If you haven't got your tickets yet, or if you can't make it, I certainly understand, but...
So it's no longer a surprise now?
No, no. No, he actually knows.
I was just going to say.
It's no longer a surprise. You know, you know, there's no surprises in life. We know that, you know. He found out, I think, about the two days after we tried to keep it a surprise. Anyways, but, but Bill is obviously, you know, a great friend to all of us and did a terrific job for this community. So we're very, very pleased to be able to do something for him. Again, just, we went to the MMA annual meeting this past week, and it was a great meeting. I, it's, it's a little longer meeting for me, but it's, but I will tell you, it's, it was great. The governor spoke on Friday morning, indicating that we'll see, we should be seeing, he's going to file a bill on state aid next week. So we'll get an indication of that. At the Maya Board Meeting, I was able to, to learn that our health insurance rates are going to be coming out within the next two weeks. But the range was actually, the overall increase was somewhere around 4.8%, which is actually significantly lower than it has been. So we're pleased to see that, see that direction. I taped another edition of the Ask Bill Keegan Show this, just yesterday, but it was actually a videography of walking around the entire building. So it was to give people, those people who haven't seen the building, to get a chance to see all the offices. And Mike did, is working on that piece right now. So look for that to be coming out in the next, the next few days. Another AdCom meeting tomorrow night, and budgets are being presented as we speak. We've also been working, I've established a town manager working group on the CIP policy. Jenny's been participating in that process, as well as Sean McCarthy from the AdCom, Frank Spillane, the moderator, Randy, Mary Beth. And we've been working on drafting a new, some new changes to that. So we're meeting again, actually, tomorrow to review it once more. So we have, we have a couple of drafts in place. We're going to be starting to, and we'll present something to the board, this board, as well as the AdCom, before we put it forward as an article for town meeting consideration. And then finally, we are doing the year-end review process, and we wanted to make sure, and Caitlin's been working on that process, and came up with some great ideas of things that happened throughout the year. We'd like to get your feedback. We're working on it now, so, but we didn't want to put it in final form until you actually had some input to that, to, in case we just missed anything. We, inevitably, when we go through this process, you folks always come up with something that we, that we missed. So we want to make sure we give you that opportunity to, to weigh in on that before we finalize it. Those are my, my topics for tonight.
On that note, the first two, the flash mob at Stop and Shop and the Super Bowl win, put something in there about the rally.
Yep, the rally on the Common.
Also, I would try to weave somewhere into there all of the things that the J.C.'s do for the town of Foxborough, whether it's, you know, decorating the Common or putting the banners up. I don't know.
We'll have pictures of them actually participating in those rallies, so we can, it's actually a videography of all the different things, pictures throughout the year. So we should have pictures of them participating in that.
Yeah, yeah.
And the Night of Remembrance that we had, they actually coordinated that as well. So that's a good thought. If you have other ones, feel free to let us know.
Lot of stuff.
Yes, a lot of stuff. It was an interesting year.
Good stuff. Some good year, some bad stuff.
Right. Okay, that's, that's my stuff. Mary Beth?
So we concluded customer service training yesterday. Since November, we've been holding mandatory training for all our employees with the idea that we'd like to roll out a customer service program, you know, sort of kickoff on the building, but also for all the other departments around the town. So in order to make sure, you know, we're planning to survey people as they come in, you know, with survey questions. How was your experience? How did you feel when you came in? How did you feel when you leave? We're, we're working on the wording of those questions. But we felt in fairness to the employees, we felt we'd brush up on those skills. So we had a person from our Maya EAP program come in and do four sessions with employees on customer service excellence. It was tips and tricks and some workshop, some role-playing on dealing with customers and exemplifying an excellent standard in customer service. So in February, we'll be rolling out the survey cards at every department, whether it's, you know, DPW, library, COA, all around town, at each department. And we've also asked employees to, you know, let us know, give us feedback on the questions. Would also, we'll provide a draft to the board so they can give us feedback on the questions we're asking. Chairman Feldman has given me several samples from town halls that he's traveled in, towns that have customer service surveys. So that will be rolling out in February. Personnel Board met tonight. We're, the state has required us to revise our quarry policy, which we adopted back in 2015 and bargained in with all of the unions. And we, we quarry every person that we hire, even our contingent workforce, like seasonal employees and, for example, volunteers and presenters at the library and recre, people teaching the recreation program. So it's a very important policy for us, and the new law requires some changes. So we're working with our HR Council, Jack Dolan, and the Personnel Board. We visited the item, the issue, today, and we're going to revisit it again in two weeks. They'll hopefully come up with a final revised policy for your review at a future meeting. We, as Bill said, we continue to meet with the department heads on budget meetings. We're on a schedule where whoever's presenting to the AdCom on Wednesday night, we're meeting with them prior to that to talk about their budgets and flesh out some of the questions. And then our own budget, we've met with our liaisons on that and getting ready to present tomorrow. And that's all I have.
We'll be presenting to this board on the February 20th, the proposed budget for the town. We're proposing the, the proposed budget that we have at this point in time. So we've been meeting on a regular basis on every Wednesday with, with the AdCom. The meetings have gone actually quite well so far. So we're pleased to see that, that everybody's coming, coming in pretty, pretty reasonable with their overall, overall budgets. So that's it.
Actioners?
Move to approve a one-day auctioneer's license for motorcycles of Manchester, Inc., doing business as Mom South for $127.18 from 9:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. to raise money for charity.
Second.
Motion made, second. Any further discussion? Seeing none. All's in favor?
Aye. Move to accept a gift donation in the amount of $525 to the council on aging to pay for two programs held at the senior center and for the senior center holiday party from the Friends of Foxborough Seniors.
Second.
Motion made, second. Any further discussion? Seeing none. All's in favor?
Aye. Move to approve a one-day wine and malt beverage license for the Orpheum Theater for $223.18 from 5:30 p.m. to 11:00 p.m. for Postcards from Heaven, Maureen Hancock.
Second.
Motion made, second. Under discussion. Thank you, Bob Hickey, for getting this well in advance. Got to love Bob. All's in favor?
Aye. Move to approve a one-day wine and malt beverage license for the Orpheum Theater for $23.18 from 6:00 p.m. until 11:30 p.m. for the Oh No's and the Beatles tribute band concert.
Second.
Motion made, second. Any further discussion? Seeing none. All's in favor?
Aye.
Recuse myself.
Move to approve the seventh annual Bailey's Run for Bailey's Team for Autism event on March 25th, 2018, with the run starting at 10 a.m.
Second.
Motion made, second. Any further discussion? Seeing none. All's in favor?
Aye.
Move to approve the eighth annual 5K-10K road race for the Foxborough Regional Charter School on Saturday, 10/20/18, from 9:00 a.m. to 10:30 a.m.
Second.
Motion made, second. Any further discussion? Seeing none. All's in favor?
Aye. Move to approve the $12.28.17 Board of Selectmen's Minutes.
Second.
Motion made, second. Any further discussion? Seeing none. All's in favor?
Aye.
End it?
End it. Move to adjourned?
Second.
All's in favor?
Aye.
Got to be a record for January.
All right, everybody.